July 25th to order and ask everybody to stand please. Two student representatives, Adam and Connie are going to lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
Everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Please call roll.
Rob?
Yes.
Peasants? Fisher? Griffin?
Here.
Hubbard?
Here.
Michelle's?
Present.
Kyo?
Here.
Keating?
Here.
I'm D. Gregorio.
Here.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Paul and Donna are, neither one of them is going to make it tonight. They both did notify me, Donna just most recently. She's still having car troubles. So we're down to item C on the agenda, which is approval of the meeting minutes. We have the city council work session minutes in the packet and the minutes from the July 11 meeting by the supplement that's on the pass. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to approve either one or both sets of the numbers? Move by, listen, thank you.
Hold on a second.
Thank you. It's good for any.
I did not see anything. I have one day.
Okay.
And under the council comments on the right, for the regular meeting, for the Dave Flutten's presentation, this was a question I asked about defining attainable housing, not affordable housing. They're two different things.
Where am I looking at that? Sorry.
It's page five of the supplement, the second bullet.
That's our problem with this. Yeah, okay.
So you want attainable? Yeah, I didn't ask about affordable housing. I asked about attainable housing.
Yeah. See that? Quick to count. Any other notes on the minutes? Okay. Please call a vote to approve minutes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Peasants? I'm Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
A Rob?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion curious. Thank you. We are down to prearranged participation and we have a representative, Marie, right, from Meter?
Yes.
Can you, you want to introduce? Oh, there we go.
Um, Mike Coke from Meter Investments is here via Zoom to give you an annual report on our investments. I will let him take it away.
Great. Welcome, Michael.
Hello. Thank you. Can everybody hear me like this?
Perfect.
Yes, no? Okay, good. And do you need me to share my screen or does everybody have it, the information in front of them?
I think you could share it just for those online.
Sure.
You don't mind, Mike?
Uh, so as host has disabled participant screen sharing.
Hey, Josh. See if Josh can fix that.
Josh, remember under the green
Hey, there we go. Okay.
Yeah.
So we can see it.
Great. So let's kind of dive into things. This is more of a, kind of a top level view, not really going to get into the finite points of all of the things that are going on economically and in the marketplace, mostly because all of you, they're so prevalent, everyone is aware of them, everyone's aware of what's going on. With inflation, everyone is aware of what's going on with the economy. So it would just be taking it more time than we have to go into all of those. But there, we did want to kind of touch on a couple of things here. The first is how the Fed's rate outlook has evolved amongst inflation and inflationary pressures. And what this graph shows is how the Fed's outlook for the future has changed from March of 2021 until now. And the, each of these dotted lines shows you that as of those time periods where the Fed's outlook was projected to be. Now, the thing that is relevant for our purposes is that the, if you see here at the top, the June 2022 outlook, we are actually now starting to see in spite of all of the rate hikes that you're hearing about, we're probably going to have another, well, not probably, we almost certainly will have a rate hike this week, whether it's 75 basis points or a full percent. There is still some debate about, but if you notice there at the end of that June 2022 graph, the Fed is actually seeing rates to start going back down as soon as either August or December of next year. That could be sooner, it could be later, there's not a lot of certainty there, but the longer term outlook for the Fed is definitely in a downwards motion. Okay? So this is a summary of the various indices and the real GDP, you know, employment rate as you see the core PC and the Fed funds rate showing how things have evolved over the last few months and what the outlooks are going to be for the next couple of years. As you all know, the Fed has been trying to engineer what they call a soft landing, which is when they lower the growth rate down, not into the negative, but just slow it down. And unfortunately, they've only managed to do that two out of the last nine times they've tried that. So while they are still showing here that, yeah, the the various growth rates and so forth, they're still showing in a positive history and the numbers don't support these projections, which is not to say it's not going to happen, but it's not really favorable. As I said, only, though, over the last nine times they've tried to do that, they've only managed to do it twice. The other seven times, we've ended up in a recession. So the labor market remains tight. Job growth was 372,000 last month. The, the, the job openings are far exceeding the number of unemployed workers, as you can see here, by almost two to one. And so there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of volatility. There's still a lot of trouble in, in getting people to apply for jobs and getting people to take jobs. They're, they've been calling this, you've probably heard this on the news, the, the great resignation. Is people coming back from COVID or people not coming back from COVID, as it were, the, a lot of gig workers, a lot of people that have struck out into consulting and so forth. And so that has also contributed to the situation that we are finding ourselves in now economically. So the inflation, as I said before, you know, we don't need to go into a lot of this inflation, everybody knows and has seen inflation, although we have seen gas prices come down a little bit from a tie of a few weeks ago, but, you know, I was at the grocery store today and there's still, it's ridiculous, some of the food prices that they're charging, sometimes 50% more than they were charging just six months ago. And so there's still inflationary pressures on those everyday things. It's no longer just COVID-related issues or things that are recovering, like the service industry as a result of the shutdown because of COVID. It's going across all sectors of the economy. So this is what we call the Treasury, the US Treasury yield curve, and this, the arrow represents the five-year yield curve, which is where we operate from zero to five years. We've seen a lot of growth from December of 2021. A tremendous amount of growth and even a lot of growth since March of this year. And so as a result, reinvestment of maturing securities for the portfolio has been very good. It's in, it's been in the 250 to 3% range. Or excuse me. And maybe a little bit, even a little bit higher than that. And so we are starting to, as I mentioned before, the Fed outlook on the negative, it says, as you can see here, the yield curve inversion starts to set in as the two in the 10-year spreads narrowing. Now, historically also, when you see, this is just a little kind of inside baseball economic information, when you see the two-year and the 10-year invert, which is to say that the two-year has a higher yield than the 10-year for longer than a day, longer than a week, that's usually a typical harbinger of a recession. So we have started to see the two in the 10-year inverting a couple of times over the last month, and it has started to happen more and more frequently. So that has been a pretty accurate, as I said, determinant or indicator, excuse me, of a potential recession that is on the horizon. Obviously, the question is, when does the recession hit? Are we already in a recession? Or is it this year? Is it next year? So on and so forth. So that's one of the uncertainties that, you know, those of us in the fixed income markets and those of us in business are dealing with is trying to figure those, those things out. So before I go into specifics about your portfolio, does anybody, I kind of ran through that quickly, but does anybody have any questions for me about any of that information?
Doesn't look like it, Mike.
Okay, fantastic. So let's talk a little bit about the portfolio. We have just over $4 million of yours invested right now. There is about $20,000 in cash. That is simply because it's more difficult to get smaller pieces of securities for investment and the money market now is well over 1%. And so leaving it in the money market until something else matures, as you can see here from our graph, we've got a million 350 that is going to be maturing over the next year. And so that is a good portion of the portfolio and those reinvestments will all be able to take advantage of our current high interest rate environment from that standpoint of 275 to over 3% because if, you remember the graphs we looked at, it looks like it's almost certainly going to be nine, 12 to maybe even 18 months before yields start to dip again. And so a year and a half from now, we'll be in a much better place from a yield perspective. Also keeping in mind that we've had a very good yield compared to where the bank rates were. And Marie can brief you on that, but compared to where the bank rates were and where the money markets rate were, rates were, excuse me, five to 10, 15 basis points, if you were lucky, for the whole two years of COVID, we were in that 1% to 125 range. And so while we're dragging behind the marketplace a little bit now, that's the idea of a strategic portfolio is, is you miss the very, very high, but you also miss the very, very low. And so we get a good consistent yield throughout the course of those up and down motions in the marketplace. So portfolio is still, everything allowable under Public Act 20. You know, we're currently invested out to with a maximum maturity of, of five years. That's it.
The Michigan community is bright schools, bright schools, right, or Brighton City?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that. Could somebody repeat it for me?
Our Michigan municipal, that's Brighton Schools or Brighton City. I don't remember which one, but that's.
Oh, that's one of them, yes. Oh, let me see if I can pull it up here. Bear with me just one second.
So Mike, as you're thinking through that, what's the range then of yield? What's the highest yield we're in now?
Well, we just, we, excuse me, we just did some trades today that were in that, that three to three and a quarter percent range. I don't have the trade ticket in front of me. Our operations hasn't done it yet, but I was talking with Investments, and so that would be the highs in that, above three.
And then all the way down to?
Well, let me see here. Let me answer one question at a time if I could. Uh, pu 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 pu.
Not that important, Mike.
Bear with me. Okay, here we go. Right near a schools. That's that, that's the bond that we have. And then the yields, answer the other question. I'm just going to pull you, your statement up here for a moment. If you bear with me. It's your last report. Marie has a copy of it here as well.
Yeah, I can't open my email, so.
That's okay, I've got it. Okay, so anywhere from, I'm seeing 17 basis points, 24 basis points, 45. And those were bought at a year ago, a year and a half ago, when we were at our very, when the market was at its very lowest. But as I said, we've also got a scattering, there's a 284, a 271, there's some 1%, there's a 312 in here, a 311, 276. So, and that's what, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. That, that's what I was looking to understand.
Okay. And, and as I said, Marie has a copy of this report. So if you had questions about specific yields or things like that, but, but as I said, the, that million three that is maturing over the next year, over the next 12 months, it's all going to come back into the marketplace where we are now, which is well over 275. And, and a lot of it's over 3%. So it will be a year from now, we will be get, having a, you know, if not twice the yield that you have now, now we'll be closer to that 3% as those things blend out.
Sounds good. Jim?
I have a question. I think this might be one for Marie or I guess somebody else on council. This money is used for these investments. This is all for like our retirement and I mean, does this ever get brought back into our?
These are our reserves.
Budget reserves.
So it's just separate from any kind of pension or OPEF funds. It's just the, the funds that we have, either like some of them are, are the stuff that's been committed or, you know, designated for certain things by council. Some of us, um, I'm designated. Um, some of it, because we fluctuate, you know, as far as when we get our revenue in, um, and we have a fairly substantial amount of revenue right now that is unspent on the, the water. You know, so those kind of things flowing out. There's also some DDA funding in there. I mean, this is everything. This DDA water store. Down.
So you'll read Meter Investments right there on some of those on that sheet on page 24.
Gotcha. Okay, so this is like where the money is sitting. Nope. At face of, okay.
From different funds. And it's blended.
Okay.
But she keeps tracking it separate there, but it's blended into
Yeah.
The groups that were on there.
Thank you.
How long have we been with Mike and Meter? Because we did this about five years ago?
Um.
It was so far the plan. By 19?
When did we start, right?
In 19, I think, Marie, right?
Okay, so it's not quite fine, all right. The idea was to try to get a little better than the well, people could say a little better than this channel, the bank can be a little smaller. Right, that's all.
We started this.
Started the best and through Michael. This is my, and finance director knows we've actually got decent returns compared to what we previously had.
Yes, I mean, I still, prior, prior to getting with Meter, we were very heavy in the CDs and that sort of kind of investment and into government pools, which we're still in, the government pool that's here as Michigan class, or I might have it as MBIA. Um, so that, what that pool is, it's, it's kind of a it's a similar, it's a similar kind of thing to like the money market. They, they, they also invest in commercial paper. They also invest in the federal instruments, but all of the members are pooled together and they're all municipalities and their board is controlled by treasurers and finance directors from cities and towns all over the state. So we're in there, we're in Meter, and then most of the rest of it is just in straight, you know, basic checking type of accounts. And that's more of our needed cash flow, you know, on a daily basis.
Any other questions for either Marie or Mike? Mike, thanks for joining us and for doing a good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all very much. And if anybody has any additional questions, just get them over to Marie and we'll get them addressed.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are down to item E. This is approval of the agenda. I don't think there's anything need to add as of just after tomorrow. So I would like to make the motion to approve the agenda. Who voices up? Any discussion on the agenda? So now this call vote to approve the agenda.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Item P is declaration of any conflicts of interest. Any declarations this evening? Let's see now. No public hearings this evening, so we're down to item H, which is non-arranged participation. And now that they are here for item M1. Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? If so, can you please use the resume feature? Definitely not seen any. Or if somebody does, we can come back to it, okay?
Okay.
Down in communications in the packet on page 16, we have our meeting calendar. Not sure if there's any cards on the meeting calendar that anyone wants to make. Go ahead, Jim.
Dan's maybe is showing up under a lot.
Yep. Update that. Thank you.
Are you still going to get the validated part, you know?
Okay, to move on to reports, we will bring back up our finance director, Marie. Welcome.
His computer is finally working again. Hello, okay.
Good evening.
So you had in front of me the last quarter report for last fiscal year. Um, you'll get, you'll see more of that information again in about six months when we do our audit. The only thing I need to add, I would like to add to this is that this morning, we had the kickoff meeting with thank you, we've cleared off. And I just personally wanted to thank council for giving us the approval for going out for that. I'm really kind of excited to see how it's going to work and how it's going to do the modeling and how it just kind of came about. So thank you. Do you have any, any questions about Virginia?
I think, I must not be reading your tables correctly, but it's starting on page 21. So you've got a column with the original budget, the column with the amended budget, your today balance, available balance, and then percent budget used. So I think, so for just the first one, general fund, it says percentage of budget used 100.51.
That means we took in more revenue than we budgeted. By 21,000.
Okay, so.
Let's do an example. Why would that?
A lot of times it's other revenues. It's one-time things that we don't budget for. I think usually we budget about 5,000 for other revenue. I want to say it's close to 15. So that's
Then the second state payment, there's always more than we don't anticipate.
So we did, we did do some amendments on that.
So does that not actually mean for that row, does that not actually mean percent of budget used in the same way that it does for the other line?
Correct.
Okay, because I am.
And it's inverted.
Yeah.
Okay, because I was thinking if we okay, right, use more than 100%, then one of those numbers below percent of the use should have been over 50%.
Yeah.
But it wasn't.
No, because
That it understepped on all.
Yeah, right. We want to be like, ideally, we're close to slightly over 100 in revenue and we're close to slightly under 100 in expenditures.
So then the actual thing that I, the number I think, thought that was, is that actually 92.11 down at the bottom, is this total expenditures percent of budget used in 1921?
Yes.
Okay, so that's
And the red 336 is actually good.
Yes.
We were able to save 336,145 more across all that, between the additional revenue that we received and not spending everything, but budgeting under the expenses part.
Although we, we will see some adjustments on that between now and the audit for accounts payables that happen. Yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations on your nomination.
Yeah, I was surprised.
Nice to be recognized. When do you think you'll find out?
Uh, the final one is today. I think the voting is in August and then the award is at the call conference in the end of September.
Very nice.
I would like to know who nominated me. I don't know that yet.
They would tell you that?
I'm pretty sure they tell you, yeah.
The winner or?
Yeah. Yeah, I think they tell you. I think they tell you anyway.
Yeah, good.
I think, I'm not sure.
And then some of these funds are just not directly filed for the latest utility bill, right? So a couple of months now, payments.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the utility bill that just went out in July still needs to be moved back. And I do that when I start with the audit.
On page 26, you've got, you have our unsigned fund balances is under Java Fund. It's the 1.6 million or close to 1.7 million. Out of that, we would take what we want additional for the fire station if that comes from somewhere else.
26, you're the unsigned fund balance, the 1.6, yes.
Yeah, so it would be coming out of there. But that's also the thing that we like to keep at 50% or
In, in this, um, kind of balance sheet information, if you go down underneath towards us, available for non-operating uses, our, our policy fund balance of 50% is 562, 350. So you actually, and, and, and if you start to look at all the, we've got, you know, some liabilities, we've got accounts payable, I mean, that sort of thing, and things that we've assigned for different things, you're looking at 1.3 now, 1.6. So it's in the, the second, the next one down. And I didn't, um, I still kept the rate, budget and expenditures and revenue in this. A lot of times I put it to zero, but this year it just, you think, so I got a lot of lead at the same and then we'll take a look at it next time, once we have all of our accounts paid over there.
So of that 1.3 million, is there some number that like, would you recommend taking that down to zero or no? There's some reason we'd keep that, some positive number. Or I don't know what it typically is.
Yeah, well, okay, so by policy, we're looking at around 562. The bond rating agencies, for example, always call out the fact that we're at 30% or 40%. They, they like this higher amount. I would say probably somewhere in between the two. You know, I wouldn't go down to zero. But that's just, I kind of like having that, you know, extra cushion.
But you're, you're looking as we talked in the workshop about, they're trying to save millions, they have millions saved.
Right.
We've got the 188 down here at the bottom under cashable and 300 could be re, could be blended into our recent. And then you know, there was some fund balance from this year.
Absolutely.
You know, that extra 300 would be close.
Because that, that, you're talking about the amount that was set aside for the stabilization point that I was just, yeah.
For, for the tables on page 26, does that, does that reflect the 300 from so your 2122 or whatever, it must have been in August.
Yeah, she's got her main budget running there.
And you also, and the, the part that you see there, that's unearned revenue of 495, that's the the, the recovery funds that we're going to be using on we just have more data. And, and I did want to call out, I'm sorry, I didn't call it out in the, in the report. Justin and I had talked, you know, during budgeting, you're all excited that we probably were over our OPEF funding in my comments. Not anymore, but we're not significantly lower than where we think you should be and we should recover from that. But we took a lot to ask us.
Does the market?
Yeah. So, man.
Definitely, whenever they get their hopes up.
Other questions for you? Thank you very much, you have a great work. Next up is our Public Services Superintendent Report. Which is, I, Justin's going to handle it.
This is on my case this week.
Okay.
Have you got any questions to report?
I would like to thank him for giving the truth, Jim, on the certain duty portion of the path, and if you notice that. I wanted to ask about the mowing of the grass along with that, that event in Ford School. Do we do that in two phases? Like the park, the park from the park, or the, or the, where the tractor's going to come from the ground? Looks like it's more recently mowed than apart from the boardwalk. They make your roll.
They, they do that in, in jets, just depending on how much I'm going to have.
It's, it's much better, it's much better, right? As you leave the boardwalk, the growth has been.
We, we did have a walk, not last week, but the week before, with, with, um, to review the area, the proposed grand new connector. Just take a look and see what the terrain looks like out there. And then, uh, Brian Services was in today to start working on relaying the bricks in the circular city areas in Milbury Park and clearing out the brush and the water.
We were at community park this morning, and I noticed that the duck rocker is missing. I didn't know if it was moved for service, but I could send you a picture, I mean, like detached the spring, so there's barely like a coil coming out of the ground.
Okay.
I don't know if that was a manual thing or an intentional thing.
I, I, I have not heard, Josh, did, have you heard anything about that rocker? We will.
Questions? Okay, tell ten things. I keep moving, uh, community development manager, who's up next, Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, I was counsel.
Good.
That's good. All right, you have my report in front of you, and before I tell you about my grandbaby visit, please let me know if you have any questions.
I know this is a question for you, or maybe you should have fallen under Public Services Superintendent, but somebody raised the question to me about the potential annexation of Slough Kingsley. How, but all that would affect our current water restrictions? So are they watering, that sort of thing, does that, what role does that play in that?
So, I mean, I, I would change our water restrictions, our water restrictions are in place now.
Or like make it, even, so we have to go, you know, something more extreme, they could have further burdened that, or no?
I, I, I wouldn't think that it, that it would make it more burdensome, except for maybe more enforcement. We, we do tend to start active enforcement once that number starts creeping up. Kind of at the beginning of summer, spring, when people start turning under sprinkler systems. But, I mean, it, it definitely, I don't think it would go away.
Part of our calculus would be, we want to find well sites on that property, that makes sense. Yeah, we would certainly need to find one to support it.
It's, it's a capacity issue. If there isn't fund capacity, then it goes without saying, the annexation is.
Right, right.
Yeah, I also brought this idea of the mirrors, I think you included that in the supplement, the mirror, the mirrors.
Oh, yeah, we wanted to know, yeah, go ahead.
Just, I just wanted, I guess, to say that out loud, because it's been on, part of our discussion on parks and rocks are these, please wipe the right stencils, we talked about them before on council, it seems like feedback, we're not really sure how effective they are, because they're faded, they won't be known, they wash away, maybe we'll give details. One thing we wondered about is, would people be more likely to see it if it was a sign, like our social districts sign, that just goes up seasonally and in more targeted places, so something that's more at eye level, as opposed to something that's around, we talked about that. The resident who's been concerned about this reached out to me and specifically called out the beer garage as a place where there are all these potential collisions, the servers are coming outside to their seating area, just because of the way that's designed. I don't know what extent City's been in communication with beer garage about those concerns, or if any other commercial residents or commercial business has reached out about that, but then I remembered a recent visit we took to Brighton, and when we were approaching an alley, there was like this big convex mirror, and I thought, oh, this is really nice visibility. I don't necessarily have a specific place in mind, but, for example, beer garage, again, I think it's a central of them, I don't want it to cross the city areas, but if it's something they'd have to agree with, or to even know if it would be helpful to them. Anyways, I've just been thinking about the whole thing, if you can talk about stencils, maybe an operating mine, maybe a mirror, just to figure out what would be the points.
So, um, I don't have any recollection of beer garage bringing any concerns to our attention about any conflicts. Excuse me. If the goal is to have people walk their bikes, then we need to talk about how are we going to enforce that, whether it's signs. Let me step back. If you want them to stop and make sure they walk bikes, then you're talking enforcement, and then you need to bake into that the, the necessary elements or components in order to then have an enforcement. If it's a safety thing, not so much, excuse me, want to err more on the side of, let's try and make it safe for people, there's still going to be an enforcement component to that. If you don't have that, we can, we can go through lots of different iterations of the stencils and the mirrors and a number of different things that we haven't evolved yet today, but if we're not enforcing that, it's not going to produce the results that we want.
All good ideas.
Absolutely. There will be a new business opening up, excuse me. Next to the film work, I can't remember the address, it's Little White House there, the alley cuts between. It's going to be a spiritual spot, so there'll be massages and things like that, but they also do counseling and spiritual guidance. It is going to be operated by one lady is a pastor, and she has such, right, but that's their, their, their take on the, on the massage therapy community aspect of their business, so that should be opening probably before Labor Day, I'm not really working hard to get it there. If they really want to try and be open before Dexter Day, I'm just not so sure that they'll be able to get their C of all before, so we're working on it. Any other questions?
I'll do it, thanks. The sheriff's report is written in the package, if they have any comments or questions on the sheriff's report. Dave just, Dave's green, cut down to city manager's report, listen. For her back.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on the report?
So this media audit of the parks, uh, the Parks and Rec meeting, Becky, the chairman of the academy that we had done, please tell.
So we had one of our insurance representatives go through the parks to evaluate them for potential liability. So that, that, that's kind of one take on it, is it's, where are we, kind of tilting ourselves on liability? He was not going through to evaluate for ADA compliance.
That, that type of, it looks to see if you still have the old merry-go-round and metal things and tall metal slides that people could fall off.
Where, where, where people want to tread, that, that's where I think. So similar, but not the same. So I, I recovered, Brand Services, we, we are going to be open this Saturday for absentee ballots. I think as of today, we're around the four hundred and fifty ballot mark returned. I think the number that we had included in the packet was perhaps number, but and we've issued around eleven hundred as of today, so there's quite a few more to be returned still. The deadline to file for city council is tomorrow by four P M. We are still working on getting the summer newsletter out, where we sent it over to, up to the printer. We have to approve the final run, then to go out and print. But once we have that, that final proof, we'll send out to city council, so everybody can take a look. We should also have our polos here shortly. Take a little bit for the printer to get those done, but probably the next week or so. If there's any other, any other questions or topics?
Okay, no further, well, if you do think it's not going to come back to Justin. I had a short report in the packet, and it was out of town for a period of time, but the one meeting I had that I wanted to share with everybody was subset of the DDA and thirty forty-five broad committee to just kind of talk about the representatives of common sale, the group that's interested in developing the thirty forty-five broad and property there over, you know, free market. They are interested in a pre-development agreement with the DDA and the city. And say that those three parties, because we own part of the property, the DDA owns part of the property, and they're obviously the ones interested in development. What they want to do is have a six-month agreement period with the ability to extend that, one hundred and twenty days if necessary, they want to go through a detailed financial analysis, they want to validate some of their assumptions, they want to better understand some of the TIF capture options, and how the money that's generated by the project could help pay for both the brownfield eligible items of the cleanup of the site, as well as some of those TIF dollars coming back to the DDA and our city for the purpose of constructing a park and structure. And the park and structure would be, if you remember the concept plan, it was proposed on the other side of Broad, at Forest, or at the corner there. They proposed a two-story structure, somewhere on the order of sixty-seven million dollars of the cost is the estimate to build. And their idea is that, that the tenants of the residential development could lease, lease spaces as one part of income back to the city, and then TIF capture could be the other. But they want to, they want to pay for a, somebody that specializes in working through TIF catchers. Was it PMC, because that's the, yeah, in fact, PM Environmental. They wanted to bring that, that consultant on board and allow us to work through scenarios together. So I mentioned this to the DDA last Thursday, when we met, we had met in Common Sale on the twentieth, and then at the DDA meeting on the twenty-first, and I said, I would mention it to you here at this meeting. They have taken a draft of the, well, first of all, the city and or DDA has been involved in pre-development agreements before. We had one foremost originally, which, not going anywhere, and we had another one, Norfolk, which they took a slightly different path, they had more of a charrette approach designed into their window of their pre-development agreement, if you recall, where they went to the public and solicited ideas for the use of the property. Common sale does not desire to go through that approach, if you like, the information that was gathered a few years ago is still relevant, and that their proposal reflects a lot of what was discussed at that time. But they've asked us to review a mark, a markup of the previous developer that we had with Norfolk. So at, at some point in time, I don't know that it has to be next meeting, in the near future, Michelle, I think we're going to be sharing the, the draft of that, right, with the DDA?
It's actually not, it's been shared.
Well, what I mean is, we're going to be discussing.
Yes, yes.
And what I'd like to do is, is share that draft agreement with council as well, since the three-party agreement will require all three, you know, groups to have input. I don't know how anyone feels about that, it's, you know, it's an exploratory period to allow them to get a little better handle on some processes, and allow us maybe to get an opportunity to understand how the TIF capture for that property could be used. I don't know if anybody's interested in that or not, it would be, there would be no obligation for either party or any party to go forward with that thing. What they're interested in is having, you know, exclusive control, such that we aren't talking to anybody else that they're in the same period, and typically they would often pay some money for that exclusivity, if you will. That prompted a hand, yeah.
Yeah, so Michelle, I've sent out an email, I'm guessing other people got it, I can see a lot to go on with UCC. And so I think two things that stand out to me, that it seems like they're proposing a thousand dollars for the exclusive option, with the option to extend, no additional money. It looks like Norfolk put up twenty-five thousand dollars, and in addition, ten thousand, if there was needed an extension. So I think I'd be interested in conversations about what that dollar amount is, given what the conditions are around real estate, that sort of thing. And then, uh, it looks like they also struck out the parts of that community engagement process, outside of just the traditional development review process. So I know we did a lot with Norfolk, and I guess that was sort of before my time. I would be inclined to add in some community engagement. If those are my thoughts, based on, you know, maybe your view.
So when we, when we did the last charrette process, and even when we had, who was it, Peter Allen? If that's what you were about, when the students do some concept planning for the, the property. The biggest takeaway to me is that the charrette's led to the desire for that to have people on it, meaning for it to be homes, some homes or apartments that are grown, where do you want to put them? As opposed to using it for a different use, like a hundred percent commercial or park or whatever, there was a desire from the community to have people added into downtown on those properties. And there were people that preferred condos, or might have been okay with apartments, or both. But that was my biggest takeaway from the charrette process, and then, and then the, the access to the park, obviously, and maintaining the ability for people to move through there and not feel like it was an isolated spot, you know, but a continuation of our access to downtown to the park. Those were the big takeaways that I think have kept throughout all of the discussions on the use of this property and the, you know, the, the, the one thing that makes this unique, and I guess there's a lot of things that make you unique, but in this case, you know, we own the land. If, if we had just sold the land, they'd be subject to going through our standard, bring a proposal to us, go through the planning commission, that would be the public process. There would be no charrette or no additional type of process, so.
This is the whole reason we own the land, because we saw the value in it and wanted to be more involved with its development than some other piece of property development, and we purchased it at some point, it's not like.
We wanted to take the industrial use out of, of play. So we bought it to get rid of the building type that was there in the downtown basin to the park that we were developing. And, you know, the desire that's come through that full turn of wheels to make it residential, so type with the, what's the term, mixed use component on the first floor or something like that. Anyway, I, I, I'm open to, all comments are valid at this point, obviously, the, the goal of my talking about it today in my report is to make you aware that, that they requested that we review the agreement and see if we can, they would like to enter into a six month period to do that. We probably can't take 90 days to come to an agreement. Yeah, they're looking, they like us to do it faster than that. So the fact that you've read it is great.
Is that something you really want to take a vote on? Are you taking the DDA or taking the vote on? Is that a voting thing or not?
Yeah, I wouldn't think we would go last. I think we did, we defer.
We would.
And let, we, yeah, we let, because we'd be a party too, because we still own some part of that land. I think we let the DDA and common sale kind of work through some of the stuff and then have it come here last would be my would be my thought game.
Okay, but then our piece of it, we're proposing to sell or transfer to DDA in November on the ballot. So then at some point, we are not part of it.
Well, you still are because of the 80, 90 grand piece.
The what piece?
The 80, 90 grand piece.
Oh, oh, because that is not subject to being transferred or something.
Correct, correct. So the DDA, the, the DDA floated the question to you in the council and words to be backed up. If this is something we decided was important, how would you feel about that? They don't really need it to be part of it. It, it can be part of it and it can be developed without the ownership transfer.
And are they including it now in any of, like, this common sale, considering it as part of what they're working with?
As part of a, a parking area, when I don't remember though, and maybe it's a part of the, for the healing of the anger that needs to be done is whether that's all public, all private or.
And ultimately, they'd be doing this through a P U V, so there needs to be some public benefit component that needs to be derived that could be applied to the, you know, Grand Street Corridor or something in the vicinity.
I'm glad you brought that up because that's one of the things that will be asked of the DDA and council at future date is to, to expect to articulate what of those, what would you consider public benefits? Because it's not like doing a, a, a green development application where open space is usually, that's the big benefit generally. You're going to have open space as the primary benefit here. So having a list of things, knowing when those are convenient to give the developer of that direction will be very helpful.
So we'll probably try to get the draft of that in front of everybody after the DDA meeting, second meeting. I was looking for the other version of it. It's kind of what I'm thinking. If you have thoughts or comments that you want me to convey at the DDA meeting, Michelle, please share with us. I don't have anything else to add to my report. Is there any questions for me? Okay, are there any council member reports? Okay, we'll move down to item K, which is our consent agenda that has three items on it. That usually covers this, so why you got to step up?
I'll do it. I mean, we approved the three items on the consent agenda, those in here only amount $280,000 and $0.80. Home planning, road closure permit and the relocation of wellhouse VFBs for a amount not to exceed $46,550.
Is there a second? Thank you. Consent agenda items are voted on all at once, would you please call?
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Griffin?
Yeah.
Here.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. We have no unfinished business, so we're down to the side of that one. Thank you for your patience. Consideration of the Kids Land Montessori on Baker Road. Somebody wants to make a motion. It's something on the table before the session. Or if you'd like an update, we can.
Based on recommendation of the planning commission and the information provided by the applicant and staff at this meeting, July 25th, 2022. Pursuant to requirements of Article 11 of Arizona ordinance, I move to approve AP 2021 or 2024 combined ordinary file set plan for Kids Kids Land Montessori, subject to the following conditions, minimal revised site plan addressing all conditions of approval recommended by the planning commission. The applicants offered to dedicate the public right of way is accepted. And the comments noted in staff reviews dated July 20th and July 1st, 2022. Carlisle Wardman reviewed it until June 20.
Do you read the motion on page 73? Is that second by Griffin? Okay.
I don't think we are in this particular case.
So the letter, the July 11th letter is the management plan?
In the past.
Where it says drop off here, okay. And what, what time is it open?
Seven o'clock.
So that's earliest and somebody would be dropping off. What time is it closing?
6:00 P. M.
6:00 P. M.
I also think, as I recall from the presentation in the past, that you have a lot of students that have dropped off together. So it's not even 40 hours total, correct?
How long have you had the location in Dexter Township? By the way, thanks for coming. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Me and my wife, we moved in here in 2004 and we've been operating this business since 2006 in Dexter Township, right on North Territory Road, close to the more than 16 acres.
Yeah, it's on time, it's great.
Just one question I always like to ask, do you have any questions or concerns about any of the conditions?
Not right now. Of course, I'd like to improve the business capacity. And if we come to decide that we'd like to increase number of enrollment, we will first contact the Mr. Star, City of Dexter, and make an appeal or application. And if they approve, we'll move forward.
Anything else, Dan? Any further questions, Mr. Johnson? Okay, so we have a motion by Zach, second by Griffin, sorry, Michelle, second by Griffin. Have you read the motion on page 73? Please call the whole.
Griffin? Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Here.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thanks for waiting.
Oh, it's always a pleasure. It's fun to hear you guys work.
So new business item M2. It's consideration of a memorandum of understanding for the low income housing water assistance program.
Enters a memorandum of understanding, starting on page 125 with the low income housing water assistance program. Yes. Through the Office of Economic, of Community and Economic Department, Washington.
Yeah, so Washington, Department of Economic or Community Development reached out to us to see if we would be interested in participating in this program. The idea is that it would be minimal risk to the city of Dexter, but they would work with the Michigan Department of Housing to basically assist with funding or reimbursement of the city for anyone who lives in the city who might be potentially at risk of being, having their water shut off due to not paying. They would pay for back, back utility bills to prevent shut off. And then if we receive payment from them for one of our residents, then we wouldn't be able to shut them off for 90 days. But to be eligible, someone would have to be 150% or lower of the state poverty level and, or meet one of the other requirements that they've outlined. It seems like a, like a good program. I talked about utility building, but she didn't have any issues.
I mean, what the poverty level is?
I just pulled it up. Yeah, it goes by person, the family or household.
Yeah.
So family of four is 27,750, but if it's more like five, it's 41,625.
So what's the, what drives the timing of this? I notice this is for 15 months, December 23rd.
That's, that's what they
That's not even by federal, so the money, it says the money's tripled down. Is it in a federal
That, that's my understanding, because I think they're entering into the same agreement.
State.
Well, the state and the other municipalities in Washington, who are actually providers.
Zach? Do we know in a typical year, how many folks have challenges with water? They would benefit from this.
Yeah, so it, it was worse through COVID. We had significantly higher numbers of folks going to the shut off list. Since then, I would say we probably have between five, 15 people per, per illegal cycle on the shut off list. That, 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 you know, like, oh, it's not, it's more than just, oh, sorry, I was late. And it's, yeah, we have to prop them to get the
Well, thank you for reading the story. Other questions for Justin? Other questions for Justin? This call the whole to approve.
Harab? Yes. Hubbard? Yes. Griffin? Yes. Charles?
Yes.
Here.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. New business item M three. Especially of the eighty fifty Main Street. Probably in the lease.
Sure, so this was provided as a discussion item based on. Previous discussion of topic. Council expressed an interest in having an understanding of what the previous uses of the property were. So Josh reached out to some of our local historians to get a more fleshed out idea of what that property is used for. You can see those uses listed on page twelve thirty five. But obviously, most recently, the property is used by Hotel. And we've entered into several. These agreements within over the years. And the most recent one is coming up for renewal this year in October. So kind of an advance of that, I want to make sure, see where council was at in terms of entering to another lease lease agreement.
Were these last four uses? The restaurant based, I don't. The monster Laura stakes and takes place.
Karen Sherwood's also food based. More snack.
Yeah, the food industry.
And do you know what year that started?
I believe around two thousand four.
Yeah, it's two thousand three, two thousand four.
Our former clerk's wife was the curfew monster.
So my thoughts are. I would prefer to sell or. Some sort of mechanisms that they can buy it without having to come with a stack of cash upfront. Now, I say that with a couple of asterisks. I recognize that it's a very important building in town. And so I'd want to include it part of any sales agreement or write a first refusal in the future. So if they decide to dispense of it, we could have the option to purchase it. Also language that if they decide to remove the building, that we would have the right to purchase the building and get it to the historical society reserve somewhere. And my thoughts are because they're leasing it, it's difficult for them to do certain improvements. Like they, when they did the, the overhang, they had to stop it short of the building because there's a walkway there. Because we have it and so it's really challenging. I also don't like the fact that city staff have to go there and maintain the building. I think we've, we've got enough properties for them to paint and worry about now. So I prefer to get it back into private hands. I guess it really hasn't been in private hands. So I'd like to get it off of our concern list, but still protect our ability to ensure it's, it's an asset for the community.
So what would be the? Prevention for them to? Do enough work in there that is not right. What is what?
That's something that we can write as part of our. It could, it could be deed restrictions or conditions of sale. So we can, we can save the exterior and home or. Whatever the specific things that are involved for us, we can spell that out.
To what level then it becomes that argument you made that, you know, it will be easier for them to maintain or who changes to what I said that they will be. Not desirable.
How would you go about saying a sale price?
Well, when I bought our house, we had to have an appraiser come in and say what it was worth. So we can get that straight there. Yeah. And I understand that it would be a challenge to come up with that sack of cash. And it's not a big property, but still, it's one of the reasons why the property is in one fifty Jeffreys in the bottom half of school because they want to sell it instead of leasing to folks. So then I'd be comfortable if there's a right to own with a limited period or something like that to make it less painful so that they can be a successful business.
If I were to call right. For calling right. When we first decided to lease it. The concept was that it could be hopefully a incubator space. Where somebody can start a business with the idea that they would. Actually take that business to a greater. What it's become. In all four of these, really, if you go back to the cookie. Is a small, very similar takeout that. The idea, there wasn't seating there for a long time. Also, the ones about the flower shop. Seated next to half the town. For a long time. Was a hundred percent takeout. It stays a part of a takeout. Very popular. Choice.
Have they expressed interest in buying?
That was going to be my next question was, I don't know if he has, he has. He'd have to ask him. Maybe Justin, you could reach out and give us a few of the work he's taken.
So the, the other thing is if we were to enter to an agreement to sell, he would have to go to a vote.
Yeah. Lots of that idea. I honestly don't mind owning it and leasing it. Just from its historical perspective, I, the, the part of Zach's comment about maintenance. Does resonate with me because I'm in there a lot for breakfast once a day or once a. Yes, first and second breakfast, right? I go off on the weekends, but. It does need, it does, somebody does need to keep it up with, you know. Whether it's the windows or the door.
Well, if that, I just want to make sure the rent is competitive.
I think it's sixty five.
Yeah, that would be interesting to understand too.
Get a sense of is that even fair market?
That's a fair data point to try to figure out too. All right, well, what is the?
Is there a reason why we can't? I mean, I don't know, I, I've dealt with a commercial lease in my day job in the past where it was major things like the HVAC. And, you know, the sump pump were on us as the landlord, but every, you know, smaller things were on the tenant. Is there a reason why we can't do that?
We could, I don't even know what the current agreement says, but I mean, we've been. Mostly responsible for it, I think. We could change the terms if that's your.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's a concern and I agree that, you know, we have plenty to maintain, our staff to maintain and. I don't think that's a. Terrible ask, especially if they want more control of the building, which again, I'm not, we, we don't have the sense of whether they do or not, so. I like the option better than solid wood. Probably get out of. Being in a historical build and being out of the city.
Okay, so maybe you can approach. There's something for one second. Do some research on the other one. Okay, move on to number four. We're back down to the special of the fire station. Be a continuation where we were in our workshop. Or there's something else we want to touch on.
So I think the reason that the deal sets up is. How would you like to set up the next few meetings? So we, we do have the one regular meeting with likely a work session. Or maybe, maybe more so.
I think it's basically. We have a draft question, right? Somewhere in one of these packets, so that isn't that right? It's just a matter of figuring out the, where do we want to go? Amount or building, right? Is that where we're at?
So we need to set in a million, we need to figure out how we, I don't know, the two weeks we can figure out our how many, figure out this assessment. And we think about how much that is. And then I'd also like to know what, to get a more exact estimate of what it is even to set aside. So.
I think we could get to a million, I think we could get to a million. Now, yeah, yeah, I mean, if that, if that's the number that you think would grab the attention of people, as we tell the story, we saved a million and now we need to ask for rest. You know, but there's certainly, there's certainly general fund dollars that could be pooled with the. What was it, four hundred and eighty eight thousand that's already there, certainly half a million that could go towards. Yeah, to do.
I guess I'm probably ready for it to be a discussion item at the next meeting.
Consideration.
Sorry, consideration, consideration item. I guess you'd find out when it gets more, so what day is our next meeting?
I would say.
Okay, June fifteenth sixteen.
Correct.
So I guess if there's some.
We'd have to do it in the next five days. We, I think we're, I think we can get to a question. I'm pretty confident we'll get to a question. You know, the, the. Obviously, the amount is something we're discussing. For a good portion of this discussion, I've always felt like, okay, well, what if it doesn't pass then? Kind of like to have an idea of what you, you guys are thinking. That would be if it doesn't pass, we'll just sit on what we have and. Or we'll try something different or. But oftentimes, you know, people want to know what if we're on both, would we do that? And maybe, maybe the answer is we're going to take that million and we're going to build on the million and figure out what to do from there. You know, it might be that simple, that might be the fallback, but I, I think we should have some consideration or some thought of that. Maybe we're not unified what that is, but. We just like to throw it out there for everybody. Yeah, I'd like, I think M one. M one at the next meeting needs to be consideration of ballot language for. Fire station improvements. How we're, how we're fine with fire station, where do you want to say? Did you have a hand in it?
I do, this maybe, this is maybe, you know, past this discussion, but Justin, when. I'm, I'm at some, after this, one thing I'm sure we're focusing on, and I know we will, sorry, let me make sense here. Like what kind of educational materials we put out? Because I know I was just with some friends who live in Freedom Township. And they had a really nice, like, educational flyer that came with all of their absentee ballots. And I think that that's something really important that we could do, and I would definitely be in favor of doing something like that. So I'd want to make sure that we know what date that goes on, just, I'd like to see that built into the following meetings so that we have something to, to send out the ballots. Or the applications or whatever, like something, you know, in, in that same timeline.
I, I think that's really important because I think, I think we all need to be going around the neighborhoods and talking about it. And. Asking for the votes.
Fun idea, and you could also do a meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, for sure, in addition to it, I just thought.
All the way from, yeah, for sure. One piece, one important piece of information that's compelling to me is if you look at our historic military, it's just for a disney Dexter. Did you hear a lot of people saying my taxes keep going up, they keep going up, more and more taxes, well, often times it's due to countywide villages. So it's what, it's due to countywide, oh, Johnny, what, just so it's not that the city has been increasing its general operating village or any other special villages. And so I think seeing that timeline, that's wrap format, a chart format or something to say, is that just by the city objection loving these past ten years or whatever.
We did increase the general quarter bill about five years ago, Mr. Carson, you have a question to add from that one. Seems like this conversation sometimes, this is where I'm going to jump in. So I, I threw out kind of the, the what if speaking on the wall, what if we don't want to build a big station, why don't we just jump out of the A F D? I did look through the interlocal, there's no specific language that says we're responsible for like these places costs, just that we have to give back any equipment we have to the D A F D. But the reason why I started with that is that I felt everyone had to, oh, my gosh, we don't want to pay for entire fire station or fire department on our own. Because we get, we get a benefit now of four on-call folks and we pay for less than a third of that. We pay for one and one interchange person, but we get the benefit of having four. So even though we would be building a bigger station and subsidizing that thing. We're getting subsidized on the service from the other communities. And it's something that they had been subsidizing since the mid eighties when they did not have a fire station and the response time that, that if your house caught fire, it burned to the ground. And they had to pay higher insurance rates. Likewise, as I look at it from the, the planning and public benefit side. The more opportunities we have to keep more fire, fire bodies in our community, that's going to result in better responses. We had, not this last G A F D meeting, but the meeting before that. We had five or six of them in the room and there's a car accident at the intersection of North Territorial and Dexter Peak, which is, you can walk out and go and see it. All the phones, they're out there in thirty seconds. So that's why for me, and I'm happy to have a training facility here because it increases the, the likelihood that we'll get a better benefit out of the day. So. Yes, we're building a bigger building, but the operating costs, we're not paying as much as what benefit we get. That's it.
Well, I think we've put in a lot of good work on this. So I'm appreciative of people's patience. Some of that's for sure. But I can tell you about putting the question out there and. Whatever the number is.
I think in the next, can you put our guiding principles into your statement back in there? I don't remember, I mean, during the month, we spent time on those. They don't change my mind about anything, but in terms of bringing things full circle, it might be nice to just bring that back together and.
Important story.
Yeah, we talked about the opportunity statement, maybe you'd be able to think. And I haven't been worked with her.
I don't know, we haven't really been talking about that one.
That's what I do.
Well. Okay. New business item M five, discussion of the Baker Road property and. Sure, on the presentation from. Last meeting. All right, I'll lead off. So. This, this opportunity for that property. Or the idea of some type of development on that property. Has been out there since a long time. I've been here twenty years, my wife and I have been here twenty years. It's been out there since. At least two thousand three or four. At least two thousand and three or four. Nearly twenty years. Some people upset will say that they're interested in what goes there because. It's right next door to me. So now I'm going to back up. Some people will say we should, we should be involved in the development of that property so we can control part of what happened. There's, there's a sort of a fear. Associated with the fact that it's right on our, our doorstep. And that something's got to go there that we can't control. So this is part of the process. That, that fear, I'm not saying everybody feels that way, but there are people that. That sentiment drives them. I haven't lost one night's sleep. Over the development of that property in eighteen years. Okay, not one time have I woke up wondering what's going to be there. Not one time have I. Stayed awake wondering what's going to be there. You know, it's, it's sort of like when the folks at Corman Farms came to us just a few weeks ago and said, hey, we're interested in coming to England City. I personally am not looking to annex anybody that doesn't want to come in. I don't think they necessarily need to grow. In that fashion per se, or at least it is, it hasn't been my, my priority. I've thought about the redevelopment of the parcels that we have, the DDA plan we have. Sticking to that plan is pretty solid. I think we're, we're seeing the benefits of that as things shape out with Grandview and. The money a place that we've built and. Some places won't, but Dexter Road for a bit, but redevelopment, I think for me is a priority, but. I don't think I've ever said no to a community that wanted to have discussions about something. And I think. In fairness to the fact that at least. Last time I talked to supervisor. He felt that there could be some common ground for the two communities to get in the room and talk over the opportunity. And I'm certainly willing to be a part of a conversation or two. I don't want to mislead anybody. Into thinking that that automatically means there's going to be annexation that occurs. Cause I think that would be. And unless everybody knows that's what we want to do, in which case, you know, raise your hand and you can, you could just say that, that would be what the board sentiment is. I'm, I'm certainly willing to be a part of discussions with them to see where, where do I go, what the roles are, objectives and long-term. Thoughts are. I asked Donna Fisher, if she could recall. How involved the property owner was. When like Webster Township four twenty-five was put together. Or when the, what do they call it, in the inside of it was a proclamation or promulgation agreements, right? And that only had is, that's what Dexter Cross it was brought in and there was a promulgation agreement to try and. And she didn't think that the property owner was that involved in the special. I was really more between the two communities to work out. That's now. I don't know what your vision of the discussion will be. Do you, and I think it's something that, you know, if, if we assume that we're going to have an especial side, we start there. I'm interested in what's your vision of how that takes place? Is, I mean, do we, do we have three council members participate? Do we have, do we want to have a full board discussion, their board, our board? And I, I ask all of this for, for input because. Obviously, the more people that you involve, the more difficult it is to do and probably. Probably the slower it goes. Just because of scheduling. You know, this, this fire station question, putting time towards. Towards the promotion of that is way more important topic to me. Than the sanitation idea. So those are, I'm willing to sit at the table. I'm happy to be a part of the top conversation. But I'll let you know, it's, it's not my first priority in terms of long-term vision. I, I, I think that a lot of things that could be done on that property. Some are probably doable, some are probably not going to be as doable as they're advertised to be doable. It's, it's a very desirable goal to say you want something to be attainable. But. You know, that's not, that's not necessarily a promise that we've got. You know, the market affects a lot of things that we do and. How, you know, and we don't control everything in the market. I'll stop. So I'm, I'm willing to participate. I think, I think in the interest of community. Be good, be good neighbors. I think we should operate a good community on it. But. Not by any means saying it's something that we have to. Have to do. Unless there's a desire to do it, unless we find it's a desire to do it, so.
So look around the table, although I don't know where Mr. Gregorio is, I'm probably the closest to the center of Dexter Village or anyone in this room. Well, because I, I have a couple of feet on you and I did that by design. We can open the windows and hear music on five. We can walk to everything. Yeah, well, not now, but eventually. So I'm very much, and also from my background of planning, very much in favor of keeping compact. It does a lot of good things. Internal redevelopment is best. At the same time, this will probably be the last large parcel I can ever reasonably add to the city. Look to the north, it doesn't make sense. Look, there's rivers and developed areas and other things that, that make it impossible. So I, I do want to be involved in, in to make this happen in a way that makes the city happy, the school district happy, Sylle Township happy. The school age population dropped in the city of Dexter last census. Because people who live in the big houses aren't moving out because they can't afford taxes anywhere else. Then eventually that's going to affect all your schools. If they don't have enough students, you're not going to have enough funding. Likewise. As much as we want to redevelop internally, we have limited opportunities to convert houses to apartments or do large areas for seniors. This is an opportunity to do those things, to fill in missing holes that we don't. So I'm very enthusiastic about shaping it and making sure that it's best for us. And, and the other entities more involved. What I would say I want to get out of conversation is the vision that Sylle Township would have to make them whole. So if you're a township and something got annexed, it's like you're getting a leg or an arm chopped off. And it feels sad, missing it. So obviously part of the thing that, that they want is to get some of the tax money, what's there. Some of the things that I remember from last time was the really interesting park space. So. That's probably still there. They're also always interested in trails. And I happened to see a trail app and the guy who's doing their trail plan said, oh, my gosh. If you do that, you can do a trail over here and a trail up there and connect these two things. They're trying to connect that they don't know how to connect. So my goal would be to try to listen, to find the things that they would want to make them whole or make them enthusiastic about it. Also, I'd like to find out the planning process they would like to do. Again, this is a planning nerd in me. But there are ways where you can create a joint planning commission so that City of Dexter. And Sylle Township would be most involved in planning the thing and then it becomes annexed. And it likely would be done as a planning and development because of flexibility. So that would allow us to give more terms and make sure we get. The benefits that we're expecting to make both parties happy on.
I know that, I know that parts of preservation of some of the. High-quality tree areas are very important. So that's their number one. Sorry, yeah, that's your way.
No problem. Building on what you talked about Zach. I think some very preliminary, very superficial conversations were done. His assessment of planning is to do, probably love to do a, if you have a study. With like a joint planning commission. The question I've got is. Who's zoning, who do you prefer? Who's next to plan, who's on?
So ours was, the thought is that comes into us. Yeah, although there's. There, there's this, there's this weird thing. So normally joint planning commissions are a perpetual thing. We set up and you have two communities without one plan permission for both townships or city and township. We could write a zoning ordinance just for this area, which would be weird and crazy, but. That could be an option.
Well, one more thing, the word, the word that appears second on the slide of conversation. I think it's always been that conversation. I don't, I don't think we're nearly at a decision point on that. And I think it's worth the house. So, sorry.
Yeah. Sometimes you can talk about like eight points that's helpful. And the kinds of trade-offs. So it seems like they may have a pain point. They're not able to do what they want to do, Sylle Township, because they don't have similar apartment parks. They reached a pain point. We don't have, well, the infrastructure we need, water, sewer, whatever those things were. So they reached a pain point, but they can't create their own wastewater treatment plant and can't let them help me out. So they need something from us. So. I mean, I'd be curious to know, you know, do we feel like we have a pain point where we can help them? I guess some people feel like they're particularly did that with like our range of housing now. And then I think the question is like, to what extent is it the responsibility of the city to make sure that the housing, what will the city play versus what the marketplace? And then obviously you have trade-offs. So we, you know, we just gleaned on this, what effect it could have on, what is the cost of us in terms of our infrastructure? And is there ultimately a benefit for us and how do we measure that? And those would be difficult. Sylle Township did have a land preservation village in two thousand and four to two thousand and fourteen. I'd be curious to know. What would, what are the alternatives for this piece of property that doesn't get annexed to the city? Given what they're able to do in Sylle Township, they had that come up, has it. Do, do they have a, you know, thus far village of the past, what are we going to do? Well, if we don't annex them, or if they actually keep waiting until we do, is there something they can do with the property in terms of? People are afraid of what's going to happen. Doesn't seem like anything can happen.
Well, Michelle probably has, we all probably have a different answer to that, but.
I think we probably have a similar one because you know what Mr. Watson says, he has this type. He could go a couple of years to work this through, but he wasn't prepared to, interested in more financially able to, a decade of trying to come to this. The township made offers before we had the property.
To purchase that?
To purchase it for what they purchased it for and.
And did Sylle Township know what they wanted to do with it when they were going to purchase it?
Silent, we made it a preservation, you know, trying to get, but the developer at that time. Will be seller. I do not know if the township has made that offer again, or made that offer and it was a loss.
So this scenario where it could be preserved. I mean, there's, I've driven lots of experiences. Decide to sell it back.
The, the developers purchased the property for a certain amount of money. Township, if we can provide, make that whole, but it doesn't provide them the return on investment for the whole.
So here's the pain points of this would be good for the city. It provides us an opportunity to sink more wells.
Even though there's a potential, yeah, potentially.
There's that much water on the sensors usually.
I, I agree, but we can't, can't bank on that.
The, the other thing, the pain point is if there aren't houses here, they're going to be in the area because the schools are attractive. So they're going to get a lot more people in Webster Township than Dexter Township. We're going to drive through downtown, increase traffic and the length of the time it's delayed.
Well, they'll drive through Dexter.
Well, that's, that's in the details of site design is you, you can, and I will use Westbridge as a poor case of how not to do it, to design it so people will want to cut through. To make the cut through shorter than the other, you know, do that. The other thing is, has been noted here. The property tax municipal funding system in Michigan is skewed to favor new growth. And this would provide a lot of funding for our water and sewer infrastructure, tap fees. Which again, I don't like to encourage growth for growth, but it's reality how. It's done. And if it's, again, the, the details are in the site plan. There are no numbers of where you lose or make money based on the amount of units per acre. And that's something we even started with, with this property, looking at what is the cost for water and sewer. It gets more. Detailed where we can say. We're going to have so many extra sidewalks and plows and DPW guys trim trees. We know roughly what the property tax revenue is for there and it would be in that positive city.
Well, there's five of us here tonight. You know, I guess what I'm looking for from. The four of you and ultimately. Not involved here is, you know, the, the, do we want to be at the table? Do we want to have a conversation? It's that simple question right now. I just wanted people to know where I got my head was going into it. And I told Mr. Watson that the day I sat right here and he sat over here the first time he approached us. But I'm, I'm, if that, if that is, if there's, we're all interested in the conversation, then what I would probably do is reach out to. Supervisor. And tell him, hey, we'd like to have a conversation. So, you know, do we just want to have? Do you like the idea of three and three or, or do you want to do the whole board first, that whole board discussion? Jack's gonna say no.
What do you really do for those pre-op meetings? Competition, like for pre-application meeting for the right projects, what is that competition?
The job, I think it's usually for pre-op meetings.
City Council, two planning committees, staff. Which is myself, brings DPWs, Tim, and order. Our law enforcement, all they jam. DAFD.
I would maybe start with that and figure out who can cut off that list if there's, that's too big of a team, but it. At least the city council representation, if it's on par with what you do for a pre-op, to be enough to need someone to know this.
Well, so then there's, you know, let me throw another. Throw another word on the table, not to catch on fire, but. How transparent do you want these meetings to be? Are you, are you worried about, is anybody worried about whether we meet with them and if they're, you know, if there's less than. Are they advertised meetings? And that's what your vision is.
I mean, so pre-op meetings are not, are not actively advertised, right?
Pre-op meetings are, are not public meetings, when I advertise.
But since we do that virtually now, as well as we do the high five. I do record all meetings. That way, if somebody in council was planning or even a member that attended wanted to. Look at it, they have that.
And my, my thought, my, my suggestion would be that a subset of this board. Three. Goes and talks to a subset of their board, three, and has an initial conversation or two about their goals, their objectives. And then we, then we summarize it all and bring it back and then see if that makes sense to me in a different way from there. That would be my suggestion. That's what I'm thinking. Okay. He could be there. I'm, yeah, he's the property owner. I have no problem with him sitting there and just for much talker, you know, that's. I don't have, I don't have a problem there.
So thank you. I needed a few minutes to gather my thoughts on this. So I, I.
So, I, I like the idea of conversation, I'm very I was hoping from when Mr. Lutton came here, for us to have better idea of what he's thinking. As a property owner and developer, real estate man, there is a level of benefit he wants to get out of this that will make sense for him to move forward, right? And then, for me, it's really important to understand the goals and objectives of Silo Township. As we mentioned, I really liked the idea, you know, three of us and three of them talk about that and understand that. Because I couldn't get that out of that conversation. We did a, a meeting with Silo, um, maybe a year ago now or somewhere like that. A little bit of that I got, but not much. And I think it is important to understand what he's thinking, right? If he's thinking something, and that, that was my hope of asking um, to add that to the agenda, if he can come and talk to us, is to have some understanding of what he wants to put out there. Even if it is a range that is the profit for him, right? Because if it is something that is too outside of, of, that are our goals and objectives, then why to have a conversation? If it is something within that, that I think then maybe it is good to have a conversation. I'm hesitant for annexation in general of, of that property. And for me saying that, being on, at the table to have a conversation and understand, because there is an impact on us, is more towards wasn't necessarily with annexation in mind, but, or being afraid of annexation either way, but it was better understanding of it. I felt we had at least to some level with the previous developer to a point that we had a better point of consideration. And with Mr. Lutton, I couldn't get that out of the, what he brought to us. So, I don't know if it is going down the path. Um, I've one, also want them to understand that if we are going down the path of conversation is not necessarily that we are working towards something, I, I would like that beginning to be that, what are the things on the tables? What are their goals and objectives in Silo? What is Lutton's vision for, um, for this development?
Okay, well, if there's general consensus, those extra
Just want to say, it's actually promising that they don't already have plans to show.
I agree.
And by that, I mean, once they've spent $10,000 to start playing, they're tied to that. And that was the challenge with Mr. Hausler is that he has his plans, he knew he could fit his houses on it, and it's really hard to move them off of that. So, I actually see it's very promising that he's like, I'm here to talk, here's what we're thinking, because he's
Yes, but he's also a real estate man, so there, he has done some calculations of what is profitable for it, right? If it's 200 homes, will we step out and say, okay, I'm not doing this? If it is 600 or is it 800? And my worry, the way he was talking was like, he was pushing for more density than previous developer proposed. I just would have liked that because of the history of this and how much we had been involved to have that a little bit more, um, conversation from him or more ideas from him. He asked us to trust him in some things. I would have liked for him to provide more for us to be on that equal level.
Michelle, how many units was the plan we saw in Silo a year ago or 15 months ago or whatever it was? Was it like 195?
They were originally, I have to work backwards, they were originally over 400, if they wanted. The township would only, the township was 125. They came down, I don't, I have to look at the site plan.
See, this is the hard part of this. Okay, this is the hard part of this, because there's so many versions of plans and, and we have no idea really what they could have gotten approved for. Or what their, as you say, what, you know, whether financially works, let's say it that way. Whether profitable, I was a bigger question, whether, whether financially viable. But, you know, I, I think, I think what, what, what they, what they didn't say what they didn't say is that they found a way to get rid of wastewater on the property. They, they discontinued their attempts to do drilling to see if they could have a, I think, a groundwater discharge as opposed to a surface water discharge. Surface water being to a mill creek or a river as opposed to groundwater. And, and those would be expensive, that, that continuation of the development of that, plus they'd have to permit it. At some point, it becomes easier to ask the question. You know, what if we were to connect the texture?
But those were some of my
I can just think of one other thing. When the township was on the 125, we had supposed to max, the township would go. Um, that was based on the master plan at that time and the zoning ordinance. They filed for a master plan update that just favorably, um, developable and that they were for core. I don't believe they got the zoning ordinance in place to implement that. But they would do what the city's doing, which is more, more updating their ordinance in order to affect that. But they're on the same time, ready for the quarter. That would, but it, it could in theory allow the developer to have more than that 125 break in or something that might have been issued.
Well, I mean, at one time, this was all one acre lots.
And I think that's the 125 that you
And that, there was some vision of how that would play out, which is preserve certain spaces and that type of thing.
And then if they could do the wastewater treatment on their site, that's when they got closer to by 400.
Um, so the township only committed it to 125 and based on the 100 percent. You, they, because they had their own treatment plant, the township could look at them doing cluster action where they may have the same number, but smaller lots in, they go with paths, if you will. So, that the spaces that were more, uh, less appropriate for development, more appropriate for preservation of natural features could be accounted for. But that, the township, under that, could just make the planning somewhere forever to move on other
Yeah, so I have the August 2020 site plans pulled up. Maybe here are some of the latest ones. So, one had 263 units, total combination of single-family lots and variety of condos ranging from 325 to 5,000.
In cost?
Uh, in cost. And then they also had a separate single-family lot that had 197, uh, lots ranging from 400 to 600. Um, and it looks like this was maybe more this cluster option. I mean, so one of them said that the 263 units of the density was more like 08, that's the like per acre, but it doesn't like it's, you know.
It's clustered.
Clustered, so they have this preservation area. So, up at the 263 or 197, that seems pretty reasonable.
It also went with the multiple, the same multiple, which was
So, the one that had 263, uh, 48 single-family, 41 luxury condos, 41 detached condos, 31 efficiency condos and 102 age targeted condos. Does that sound right?
Adam, body, anything to add?
Smart, smart.
You're both learning very well. By the way, feel free if you want to say something, we can handle it. All right, well, if, if, if there's a general matter on the table, I'm going to reach out to supervisor for style and let him know that we want to have a initial conversation or two compare goals and objectives and thoughts and that kind of thing. Does that make sense? And then, assuming he's still in agreement with that, we can then figure out which, which of us are going to go and represent. Okay. Okay. Um, and, and by the way, I think it'd be three council members plus staff, corporate staff, that would support that. I'm going to start council comments with our students tonight. Do you want to introduce yourself a little bit for the meeting?
Hi, I'm Adam, I'm going myself here.
Um, I guess the only thing I wanted to say is I think we're, I think it's interesting to start working on all the projects like you guys have already been working on before I joined, and it's cool to learn about, so I get to see what's
Don't forget to vote, I just, I'm second. I realized after the opportunity to talk, I guess it's in the
Zach? All right, this does not need to get into minutes, but we, we were reintroduced to the wonderful term charette with respect to 3045 broad. That word has a fun, fascinating etymology, it comes from French, as you might imagine. And it was born at the Ecolide, it was our architecture school, where the professors would have a little cart that they would come through and the students would have to put their projects on it, little cart charette. And being architecture students, they were way behind and working constantly, so they'd actually get on the cart and try to finish the drawings and the models as they're pulling the thing through the building. Yes. And unfortunately, I don't think they had exactly the legs back from the day that they did when I went through, and I've got a couple scars from that. Thank you.
Okay, we're back around in that arranged participation. Anyone in the audience here, Michelle, I'm ready, you guys are good? Hey, is anyone online want to speak this evening? It's unmeasurable. Take sure they're here. Otherwise, thanks for joining us. I have small, well, yes, this is I'm not saying it for the evening, okay? All right, then I will seek a motion for you. Okay, so now, remember. All those in favor, so if I'm to say hi? Good meeting, everybody, have a great week.